I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We have the agenda. Is there a... Motion?
I'll move to approve.
He moves to approve. Is there a second?
No second.
Tom, seconds. Any more discussion? Just the one note that we will move public input to a little further down the agenda so that one of our staff can be here to address the issue that's going to be brought up. So with that, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. Alright, so we will move to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Sharp moves to approve. Is there a second?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Ted, seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Right, motion carried. County employee recognition.
Good morning.
Morning.
For county employee recognition today in highway, we have Luke Hartung, engineering worker is recognized for service from May 19th to August 25th. In human services, Karina May, social worker is recognized for 10 years of service on August 24th. And Dan Widerin, transit driver began the part-time position on September 2nd.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Right. Leech Lake River watershed.
Yeah, I'm trying to see the watershed planner for the Hubbard SDB CD. We're just doing a little bit of an update to the Leech Lake watershed bylaws and according to the existing rules for the watershed that has to be, the bylaw updates are like recommended for approval by the policy committee and then they have to come to each individual board. And so kind of the reason for the update on these bylaws was because the old ones kind of cut were kind of two documents in one and weren't exactly, I guess, it was a fairly early watershed and so it was one of the first ones going and kind of the current practice, they're kind of splitting up these documents into two separate documents and so the bylaws are just to govern how the policy committee acts and then there's kind of a financial agreement between the fiscal agent and the other partners and that was kind of in the old bylaws, it was kind of all in one. It kind of made it more difficult to, as each round of funding, since it's on a two-year cycle, as each round of funding came, we'd have to redo the bylaws and so kind of splitting these documents apart should make it a little bit easier than, there was a little bit of confusion on if some of the entities who are signing onto the bylaws but not actually requesting funding would have to follow some of the rules and regulations because they agreed to the bylaws even though they don't actually intend to request any funds. So kind of splitting these two documents off to make it a little bit, a little bit simpler and so these bylaws are pretty much just focused on overseeing how the policy committee for that water, for the Leech Lake watershed works and that is one of the simpler watersheds we have because it's just the us and Cass, Cass County involved in this. So it's been a pretty, pretty easy working relationship, but this will just make things cleaner on the funding side and agreements and whatnot going forward. Any questions?
Alright, I don't see any questions. So, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Tom moves. Is there a second?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Ted, seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Thank you. Highway. Moving right along.
Morning.
Just two items and then Adam can update on construction projects still. Two final payments I have for approval. The first one is for CP 292502, that's our aggregate surfacing project we did with Boat's Dirt Service and the final payment on that would be $23,052.58.
You had no issues, everything went smoothly?
Yes, yeah, it did end up going smoothly and fine with a couple hiccups, but we know now better for the next contract. It's how your spec book grows in size is you learn from projects.
Do we test their product that they produce?
Yes.
Regularly?
Yep, and actually at an accelerated rate or higher rate than the spec book does.
Okay, good.
We test it more frequently on, on any contract for, for the resurfacing we do.
And we're testing it ourselves, not sending it to MINDOT or anything?
No, not for the CP project. We just do it ourselves.
Mr. Ted, I'll make a motion to approve.
Ted moves. Is there a second? David, seconds. Right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Right, motion carried.
And then the second final payment is for CP 292503 and that's the calcium chloride application. And this one is a final payment of $435,210.18 to EnviroTech Services. And this was in partnership with some townships that, that agreed to work with the county. And then we bill them for our services to the townships.
Do you know right off the top of your head how many miles the townships participate in?
Not off the top of my head unless you, we have a spreadsheet that we could, we have it broken out by that we can let you know how, what.
I'm just wondering what the majority of the, I mean, is the majority the county's obligation?
Sure.
Or the county roads or is it?
This year it was.
Yeah, about fifty-fifty, maybe sixty-forty towards the county, so.
And are we getting an administration fee for our?
We collect, it's a five percent based off of what the bid comes in of, of for an admin fee from the townships.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
Yeah, a few years ago I believe that was set and yeah, it is a lot of time on our end of keeping track of.
It is.
Aaron does an excellent job managing.
Yes, he does. I've seen the maps, the books, he carries around with him all the time and I was impressed when I stopped to talk to him one day and he flipped it open, oh, let me find that. Got it very well organized.
He's my go-to person if I got questions about chloride, I'll call Aaron.
He's doing a fine job with that aspect of it, for sure.
Any, any roads in, you know, Bedora or Wyod Oak, those are the main ones I get calls on. I think it's 110 or something like that.
Yeah, and we have gotten some calls on 109 out east from, from 64. But it's hard to justify, with that new policy especially that we, that we passed at the last meeting, one of traffic counts and I get, this year is an abnormal year on 109 because 87's been being worked on. So there has been a higher traffic count which we could talk to MINDOT, I believe it's almost over though, the project over on the east side. So a little bit more traffic from that, but otherwise, I mean, you're seeing traffic in the 40 and 50 ADT volume which is very hard to justify spending $2,000 a mile on chloride. Also, you know, a lot of farm traffic, you know, with the big treads, you're tracking up that road a lot more and it, then the chloride doesn't stick as well. But from what I've seen, so. But we, we go out and we blade and we maintain as we, as we need.
Thanks.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Tom makes motion, Sharp seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Yeah, and I can give a quick construction update on our projects here. The Cassa 45 Bridge, that's going pretty good. It is on schedule to be completed end of September. That should be opened up to traffic then. Cassa 1, that one's going well. It's on schedule to be complete mid-October. The underground is complete on Phase 1 and we've moved into Phase 2. That'd be north of North Street to the city limits. The roundabout on Cassa 7 and 40, that one did open up last week. We are still waiting on five of the permanent lights. We've got seven templates up right now. The other five should be showing up in December, it sounds like, so. Just a lead time issue the electrician ran into there, so.
Will he be able to install them in?
We'll see. It sounds like he's got all the wire ran and stuff, so really it's just erecting them and bolting them into the, the pads there, so it sounds like if the weather's favorable, we could, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Cassa 13, we did finish up paving there last week. It is open to traffic. We do have to finish some striping here this week. And then part of that project is some streets in the city of Nevis too. That's scheduled right now to be completed September 8th, so. And then we are starting our Cassa 4 and 40 turn lane project as well. That's scheduled to start September 15th. We are planning to do a one-week detour on that utilizing Cassa 18, 7, and 24. With an estimated completion date of October 3rd for that project, so.
Okay. Do you know what timeframe they're going to be closing it, either in the beginning or at the end?
Yep, the 22nd, I should have said that. The 22nd will be the, the start of the one-week detour. And really that's just to give them the opportunity to reclaim and pave the road there while it's not under so much traffic on 4, so.
I was wondering, do you, does the county get a little bit extra from the state for all the asphalt being carried down Highway 11?
Yep, if they use it as a, a detour road, we get, we get paid for detour routes just because it subtracts. Hall roads, no, but we, a hall road agreement with a contractor, they need to leave it in, in same or as good condition as it was originally. So if they damage the road, it's their responsibility to go back and, and fix the road or fix damages or pay for damages done to the road. Yeah, we have had them on 6, they hauled 6 to pave 87 and they tracked loose asphalt out their trucks and then it hardened up and there's some stuck on there, so we've had them go out and they heat it up with a blowtorch or something and have to scrape it off. Shoulder, and I've seen shoulders blow out from the, the wind on trucks and we've had them either pay for material or re-shoulder roads too, I've seen. But detours, actual detours, we get paid for.
Right, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so we will move back up and we'll take care of, of public input. So if you would like to come forward and address your issue. You can sit at the table if you want, that's fine. Just state your name and then we'll.
Yeah, my name is Mark Hobson. Excuse me, my family and I own a cabin in Nevis. It's 23904 Evening Sunset Loop. We recently applied for a variance to rebuild our 1940's cabin. Our plan would have maintained the existing footprint without any changes and honored the resort's historic character. However, we were compelled to withdraw our application not because we doubted approval but due to an unreasonable requirement in the ordinance. That's a shoreline ordinance. Paragraph 11, 1103.4 says the variance applicant must certify each septic system on the property. Because our cabin sits within a PUD, the director, Eric, interpreted the property to mean the entire association's common grounds and requires us to inspect all eight systems in the PUD. We did certify our own system and it passed. Those seven other systems in the PUD are not connected to us in any way. They have different owners, separate tanks, and independent drain fields. Six of those systems are over 200 feet away from us, which is well outside the standard lot width on Lake, Lake Beltane. And two of those systems are across County 80. The additional inspections would cost at least $7,000 plus burden us with any unknown cost. Eric's reasoning was because part of our cabin sits on common ground and my parents established our footprint 25 years ago through a variance and we're not going to change that footprint. Like most PUDs, runaway bay lots are defined by the original cabin foundations with all area outside those foundations being considered common property. All additions to cabins encroach common property. This is allowed for in our bylaws and it's not limited by the county's platting, platting rules. I provided you a plat map showing runaway bay in the nearby lots. I don't know if you have that. But please note that the neighbors to our east, not within the PUD, are actually closer to us than five of the eight systems that Eric wants us to inspect. This inconsistency highlights the ordinance's arbitrary nature. The county's allowed to regulate construction and septic systems per the Supreme Court, but zoning regulations cannot be arbitrary or unreasonable and they must pass a rational basis test. The county also has a duty to apply statutes fairly. We support the intent of the shoreline ordinance to protect our lakes through reasonable oversight and feel it is rational to require homeowners to maintain their septic systems. However, the county does not require all lake shore owners to inspect their, their own systems. Nor does it mandate that non-PUD applicants inspect their neighbor's systems. Yet, the statute unfairly burdens PUD applicants with a requirement to inspect multiple unrelated systems imposing significant costs and liability. This is neither reasonable nor equitable in our opinion. We ask Hubbard County to revise paragraph 1103.4 to clarify that permit applicants only need to certify septic systems directly associated with their project. This would ensure effective lake protection without placing an undue regulatory burden on a minority of applicants. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So if there's something as simple as just a sale, where we gotta have inspection, they gotta inspect every one of them then?
I don't know about the sale. This is about the variance application, the variance process. I believe permitting is the same way, but Eric can maybe talk about that if he's here.
Would that be true if, if there's just a sale of one unit in a PUD? That they, would they have to just inspect that one unit or?
So I know that a bank, if you were to go through a bank, I'm pretty sure they're going to require that you certify the septic system, whether or not.
I'm wondering, like a PUD, like multiple systems, do they just inspect one system that that unit is attached to?
I don't honestly know.
Yeah, that would seem unfair to me. I think that's, to me, that'd be something that needs to change, if that's what it is.
So I would encourage just to listen to Eric because he actually's... I know Mark and so we've been going back and forth on this and then Eric sent something on July 18th. Eric, do you want to come up and share your perspective? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the provision that Mr. Hobson's referring to is something that's in the state shoreline management rules. So it's a state requirement and that's why it's in our ordinance. The state chose to do that whenever a permit is required or a variance or a conditional use permit, the state requires compliance inspections be current on the septic systems on that property and the state uses that as somewhat of a statewide way of ensuring that old systems are caught and upgraded. As opposed to alternatively, they could say direct counties to systematically inspect all systems and lake shore on whatever basis. So instead of that, they have, this is kind of a passive means of ensuring compliance on systems in shoreline, so. That's why it's in that part of the ordinance. It's also applicable to any permit that is pulled for a property. So I don't know that we'd have success in asking the DNR for a variance from that state standard to deviate from that in our ordinance. As Mr. Hobson indicated, if his cabin was not partly on the common element, we would not require all the septic systems that are on the common element to be inspected. So there is an option of amending the plat to enlarge his unit footprint so that it encompasses entirely his cabin as opposed to the current situation where about roughly 50% is on his unit footprint and the other 50% is on the common element. So that's kind of the background to the situation.
So any other cabin that sits at all on that common area, they would have to have their septic inspected too?
Yes, yeah, if historically, well, it gets into, we've consulted legal counsel on what to do when somebody proposes an amend, in addition to a unit in a PUD that would go outside their unit envelope, although it's not advisable to do that from a legal standpoint and if you ever have to get a mortgage, a lender's gonna raise flags with that because, you know, if they have to foreclose on it, they can't foreclose on the entire structure. But that said, if the applicant wants to proceed and the homeowners association doesn't take issue with it, the county, our council's position has been that's, that's for them to decide if they want to do that or not. And one of the other issues with this project is the ordinance requires a centralized septic system for any PUD and that was not done back when this PUD was processed by the county back around 2000 for whatever reason, so that's partly the issue as well.
So it sounds like the HOA probably does not have any, any policy or language on this situation with the cabin sitting on the common ground?
Every, I think almost every cabin's been amended or added on to since 2000 when the PUD was developed. All of them sit on common ground in some way or another. The original rule was that you could only expand by 50%, which is what my parents did. But 50% of the original lot size, all cabins may be expanded by 50% of the original lot size onto common ground.
Eric, have you looked in the other cabins? Were they all expanded according to variance?
It's been a while since I, this came up earlier this summer. I think one of the two that was referenced was done through variance. The other one, if I recall, was done through a permissible option available to them, but I'd have to go back and look to be certain.
Did they encroach on common ground also?
The one with a permit shouldn't have. The one with the variance, I believe, did. And the reason it went through a variance is most of those stick-built structures in this planned unit development are located in the shore impact zone which is the first 50 feet back from the lake and the ordinance prohibits expansion of any structure that's in the shore impact zone in a planned unit development. So that's why they went through a variance process.
So were they subject to the same septic inspection and stuff at the time?
I don't believe that variance did, but I'd have to go back and look at the, what the ordinance said at the time and if it was the same or not.
So if, if I heard you correctly, I'm not sure I did, but if Mark and his family were granted the variance, you're just saying that possibly if they sold it and someone had to go through a mortgage, there might be a problem?
I would imagine the lender would, you know, raise some flags because they couldn't foreclose on the structure with half of it being on the common element.
So I'm try, I'm trying to find a solution here because Mark has told me about the thousands of dollars it's going to cost to have this done. What happens if the variance is granted and it's like a buyer beware subject down the road? I, I know at the ti, at this moment, you have no intention of selling the property. There's got to be some sort of solution we can come up with without spending $40,000.
So I'm surprised the HOA doesn't have a policy. If somebody pulls a permit and requires a septic inspection and it's connected to common ground that others are, the others should be responsible for the inspection of their septic.
I think there've only been two variances in the last 10 years. Two of our neighbors on either side of us actually have been.
Fun, fun, fun.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what, what the best path is to address it.
My concern is, you know, that have, are we, are we being consistent with what we've done in the past? I don't want to, you know, okay, granted, I mean, we, we may have been doing things wrong in the past, that just doesn't justify continuing to do it wrong because we figured out the right way to do it, but on the same token, I want to make sure people are treated fairly in these processes as much as possible.
Yeah, I don't understand why the state does that because, you know, in our HOA, if, if there's a septic system failing, only those that are attached to that one pay for the, the fixing of it. You know, it would seem the same way with, with your variance or any, or even a sale.
The problem is the property, several's property being on the common ground, great. That's if they weren't. It would be exactly that as you described, Tom, but it's that common ground that's the problem here. When you have multiple cabins sitting on common.
Why, why do they let that happen? I don't know.
Mark, how many land or property owners are there in the association?
I think there are 24 or 25 units. There are probably 10 on the lakeside and 15 on the, opposite the lake, opposite County 80 from us.
So have you looked into trying to get the policy changed at that end?
No, well, I don't know what the policy would be at this point, but no. I've thought about asking everyone to certify their own system which sometime, I mean, when you're in association and your project drives costs on other people, there's usually a quite a bit of resistance to that. The problem isn't the $7,000 or more inspections, it's the fact that if one of them fails, do I have to pay for that? And what if there are four systems that fail? I will admit that I went down the road of inspecting the neighbor to our east. Their system, which there's no reason to expect it wouldn't pass because it passed 10 years ago. However, they couldn't find the pipes to inspect it. And they, I said, well, how do you solve that? Oh, you're gonna have to hire a Bobcat or someone to go and start clearing all the sod off so we can find the pipes. Well, I mean, that's not $10,000, but there's an awful lot of repair work that'll have to be done, driving, everything.
So I wonder if the problem is unique to the property because the way the PUD is laid out there and that's why almost the HOA should figure out how it's going to address this situation and it's a unique property, like you pull that permit and it affects everybody else. Who pays for what?
Yeah, I would think the same thing that the HOA or something should look into this because if it's going to affect you and I'm assuming that another owner wants to improve their property in the future is going to come across the same problem.
It probably would be more expensive to replat that common area to make sure everybody's on their own ground too. That, that could be worse.
Well, I, I looked at doing a survey of a 10, 10-lot subdivision about a year ago and it was going to be 22,000 for a simple 10-lot subdivision. This has got 25 units, very detailed foundation lines. And then the other question would be is if you amend, add 50% for our cabin from the original, but one other was, the other one might be 75% because they broke the rule. It's, and then no, one other one hasn't done any modification. How do you divvy up the common land?
And then to replat common ground, you gotta have 100% approval of all owners. Or you can't do it.
Yeah.
Just to take one says no and it's not done.
So the problem, it's almost to me like we're trying to fit a square peg into the round hole, you know, we have our rules that the DNR did and whatever our ordinance rules are, but you have a unique situation with your PUD. are, but you have a unique situation with your PUD that's actually, do we, do we change our ordinance to fit that unique situation and try and force that square peg into the round hole, or does your HOA address the unique situation of your own PUD?
Perhaps you could, Eric, forward me the statute from the state that is driving this so that I can read it or have someone else read it to see if there are any ways to get around, no, I shouldn't say get around it, we're fine with inspecting our own system, it's inspecting the eight others that is completely outside of the norm.
Yeah, I can certainly send you the rule.
Yeah, get a better read on it, different opinion and another opinion on what it means exactly.
Because there's intent and then there's what's written that may have unintention, unintended consequences, and it'd be nice to know what the intent was.
The intent was to make sure all of them are approved upon, not to require this inspection for every one of them, every time.
Eric, did, did I hear you say you contacted legal on this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and there's, they're saying that the DNR would actually have to approve.
Yeah, if, if there's something in our, so with the state shoreline rules, there, those are minimum standards that we have to have in our ordinance.
Right.
And then there are sometime, then we have the ability to go become more restrictive in things which we have done. This issue unfortunately is not one of those things that we have latitude to be more restrictive on or choose to have or not have in the ordinance, it's one of those things that's mandated by the state shoreline rules to be in our ordinance.
Have you had conversations with anybody at the state as to why they went the route they did with their rules?
I have not, but like I said earlier, I think the, the reason that they did that is as opposed to having a active program that they require counties to implement to go around like we used to in the nineties and early two thousands and do our lake survey program of inspecting every septic system on every property, they went to this approach which is more of a passive mechanism. When somebody comes in wanting a permit or a variance, that's the trigger for looking at the septic systems on that property, and so then I guess the state found that that was an easier way to try to get systems throughout the state to be as current and compliant as they can.
I guess I'm trying to figure out the rationale, though, I mean, cause why typically, obviously, you would go pull a permit and you'd have to have your septic inspected for your property, not the other cabins on the common ground. Why is the common ground triggering it? How is, how is it written in such a way that that, because they have multiple cabins sitting on that common ground, and now they're all affected? What's that language? That would be interesting to read and find out, is that exactly what it means? And then what would have been the intent of that? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it goes back to when the PUD was created, there ought to have been one single septic system servicing all the structures out there.
Makes sense, yeah.
And then the unit footprints ought to have been sized in a way that would have worked for all the units so that none of them partly went onto the common element.
Yeah, I'd get an attorney to look at the intent of what, well, how the state wrote it.
So I used to be on the CUP BOA board and attended several trainings with Eric that the attorneys put on, and what they do is study land issues, and so I invite you to get a second opinion. However, I do think that the attorney's interpretation would carry a lot of weight as far as understanding what Minnesota intends to carry out. Unfortunately, I, we, we don't have a solution here, as frustrating as that is for you and us. I mean, it seems totally unfair to me.
Definitely.
Yeah, unless something can be changed at the state level.
Yeah, which might end up opening a whole no, new, another can of worms for, for other aspects of it. It's hard to be totally inclusive on everything because all these situations are, are so varied that I, I just don't know if we can come to a resolution today.
Is there anyone else in your PUD that plans on doing a project?
Yes, my neighbor, the one right next to us.
So maybe that would, maybe the two, you could get together with, I don't know, an attorney or something and, and try to come up with a solution for your HOA?
Are they expanding as well, their footprint or?
They haven't said that they're gonna expand one way or the other, but they will be putting the new roof line on.
Okay.
Put the bedrooms upstairs versus on the main, because the cabins are so small.
But he's not, you know, he's not making his footprint larger, it's just the common ground, yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the other property owner was going to do any expansion at all and encroach even further into common ground if the association said, yeah, go ahead and do it without any issues. But without knowing that, I guess it's.
And ultimately, I mean, it could be as simple as anytime somebody files for a permit and it triggers this, that each property owner would be responsible for the inspection, and obviously if it was failing, they'd have to upgrade their own. Some that don't plan on doing anything might not like that, but that's probably the fairest way to deal with it.
Yeah, then the argument comes, who's paying for it, you know?
Well, it's really unrealistic to expect one person to pay for.
Everybody's, yes.
Everybody's, that's insane.
Yeah, it's kind of an expensive peace of mind for those people that do have those other systems, but, well, sorry, we didn't come to a total resolution to your issue, but at least we're a little more informed and have a better idea of what's going on. Maybe we can look at addressing this to try to clean up many of these little quirks that are, that are apparent, but it's gonna be hard to identify them until somebody comes in for a permit.
Eric, do you know about their PUDs that this affects?
Well, I couldn't tell you offhand, but there are several that were done in that twenty-five, thirty-year window ago that for whatever reason weren't made to have a central septic system like the ordinance specified, so we, there are others out there, but I can't, it's not very often that you see a cabin that goes outside its unit envelope.
Which was done years and years ago.
Yeah.
The plat has never been amended from year two thousand when it was created, and all, all additions went outside the envelope, that's just the way it was designed.
Well, like I said, I'm sorry we can't resolve it for you, but just keep moving forward, I guess, with, with your option of doing some more research and whatnot, go from there.
And, and just so you know how procedure works, if we would change the, if we could change the wording to the ordinance, that has to go through the CUP BOA board and then it comes a recommendation, and then we vote on it, we don't make changes here first.
I don't think we can even do that since it's DNR.
But, but it doesn't, no, I know, I'm just, I'm just letting them know if we could have, that would be the procedure, but it doesn't sound like we can do anything with the language.
I mean, you could ask the DNR for a variance, but I think it's very unlikely that they would entertain that.
Cause our preferred alternative nowadays is to have a single septic treaty for the whole property, right?
Well, there's that, but then if we, if, if we get deviation from that requirement, then what their concern is, is that then other counties will hear about that and they'll ask for the same, and then the whole program unravels.
I guess that's under, understandable from their standpoint. Again, it's a tough pill to swallow at the same time.
Does the state require the length of time that an inspection is good for?
Well, that's, that's specified in the septic rules, so on an existing system, it's considered compliant for three years from the date that it's inspected.
And that's a state rule and we're following it, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's nothing we can adjust there, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments or? Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Eric.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will move to natural resources.
Good morning.
It's been a long, long time coming, but we finally received bids for demolition of structures, obses, asbestos removal, removal of demolition debris from the property and landscape restoration at E. Blake Park. We did receive six quotes from different companies, kind of all over the Midwest, even one from Chicago area. So we got six, and then there was actually one that came in late, so technically we got seven, but six were, six were considered quotes, real quotes, but, so we, the low quote was two hundred ninety thousand from DRC Inc. out of Litchfield, Minnesota. They specialize in school demolition. I've had long conversations with the, the owner, and he, there's a lot of experience out of that company, they have all the equipment needed and they do their own asbestos removal, so that helps out with the price quite a bit for them. The actual budget from the grant was three hundred twenty-five thousand, so it's, it's thirty-five thousand dollars lower than what we're actually granted for. The deadline to complete the demolition is November first, and he said that would, that'd be fine, he's willing to go to work today after this, after this meeting, so. The, the thing I look forward to is after demolition, we can open it up to the public, so if we can get this done in a couple of months, the public can enjoy the winter out there.
I have a one question.
Yeah.
Does, does demolition include shoreline restoration?
It, it includes, so technically not on the shore, but it does include restoration of the building sites where the, the demolition took place.
Okay. Well, then the next question was this, does DRC have experience with restoration?
Yeah, yep, yep, so they have their own hydroseeding outfit and, yeah, there's different, different wording for landscape restoration for each building site, so they, they said that, that, they've had experience with all of it, so, I guess.
Cause that amphitheater, they're gonna be coming right down to the lake.
And I had quite a bit of a, quite a long conversation about that, too. They actually have a pretty long arm on their excavator that can grapple that, and then they're gonna put silt fence along the, the lake, and then they'll put water bars, ankle water bars every so often up the hill, so it would slow any water runoff or erosion. And then once I, I, I mentioned that it would be best to plant native plants just because they have a deeper root system that would hold it, hold it tighter, hold the soil tighter to the ground, or soil when you row it, but, yeah, I think they, they would be able to do it just fine. Said there's two trees that he might have to cut so he can get to the very bottom, but it's kind of all growing in with trees at this point, so.
Did they do an onsite visit?
Yes, yep. There's probably twenty companies that did an onsite visit, met up there quite a bit.
Been busy.
Yeah, it's been really busy.
Really, uh, wide variance of prices.
There is, yep, and I think part of that is because they have a market for their crushed con, concrete, but they also said they, I asked if they could leave a pile for us onsite if, so we can use it on different parts of the park, and said that'd work out, too, so I think saving some money at the dump ground, the solid waste station would help, or helped his price.
And if they can do their own asbestos abatement?
Yeah, yep.
That's going, that's probably where the cost savings for a lot of this other, these other entries are.
One company was, that was actually at the bid opening, they said just the asbestos abatement alone was a hundred thousand.
Okay.
So if you can save that by doing it yourself, I think, I think that saves on your bid.
So just curious, cause we had to get a permit to cut some trees?
Sure.
Will you have to get a permit from the ESO to cut down those two trees?
Yeah, a lot of them are dead or dying, and a lot of them are like two or three inches. I don't know what the tech, I'll have to ask Eric, but, I mean, if we can, I can try to get him to go around them two trees, too. Yeah, uh, one other thing, too, is, sorry, I hate bringing up surprises, but I talked to him yesterday for a while, and we're kind of switching plans, not building on the trail, the old shower house. I don't know if you guys saw where the old shower house is. It's, it's not, it's, it's in pretty rough shape, so it's not something we'd probably wanna build our trailhead center in, and it's kind of in a valley, so making it ADA accessible would be tough, too. So talking with Jeff and the, the SRF contracting, we've been talking about building at, at a different spot, the trailhead building, so we'd like to get the, the old shower house demolished, too, so I got a quote from him yesterday, that would be twenty-five thousand. So that would still be under that three hundred twenty-five thousand, it'd be three hundred fifteen thousand.
If I remember right, that's pretty much just a concrete structure.
Yeah, with a wood roof, yep. It's slab-on-grade, it's about three, three thousand square foot.
And it was blocks, I believe.
Yep, and there wasn't much for asbestos in that building, so that kind of saved on that price, too, but if it'd be okay if we could add that twenty-five thousand to the two ninety, otherwise I can come back in two weeks and bring that quote.
So that, even though that wasn't on the original RFP, it's okay just to add that in because the other quotes were so much higher?
Yeah, we, we, we're awarding the quote on the bid that was, that was let, and we can do an add like you would do on a highway, change order on the project like you would, so that, that'd just be a twenty-five thousand dollar change order.
And it'd still be under that second quote, so.
But it's, it's good to, it's good to list that in the motion for this since we know it now.
Yep.
I will move to approve and include the shower house, with the note that it's still under the allotted dollars we have.
Okay, I'll second that. Char moves, David seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we're excited to get it open to the public, so.
Yeah.
Um, well, just an update, we're gonna start mowing the forest roads and forest trails, grouse hunting trails this, starting this week, so.
And you got the mulcher to do it.
Yeah, we do have a mulcher if we have some, some.
If we need it.
Mulching to do, yep. All right, thank you, have a good day.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, solid waste.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, so the first agenda item I had today was just to kind of give you guys a little highlight of the construction and demolition rules that the state is proposing. And I attached a bunch of slides, and I won't go into much detail in any of them, just kind of hit a couple high points, but, so as I've been shared, you know, in the past, but the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is drafted and released preliminary rule language for construction and demolition landfilling within the state, and this rule change again would require that all unlined CND landfills be closed within a certain number of years. And this closure would impact both of our north and south transport station facilities. They both include demolition landfills, you know, online demolition landfills at both sites, so at both of these sites are demolition landfills that need to close within the timelines that I'll, I'll run through here. So this is kind of the first, you know, one of the first steps at the state level. They have their first kind of comments back due on September twelfth, which I'll be providing some contents based on the language and a lot of other places around the state will be as well. Then, then the DNR will kind of, or sorry, not the DNR, the MPCA will, uh... look at these comments and then kinda prepare what they have to prepare, which is called a sonar, which is pretty much explaining what the need for these rule changes are. And all this goes through, um, administrative law judges and kinda kicks off about a year-long process to, uh, put these rules through, hear public comments, um, amend the rules, um, and their target date is, uh, kinda the end of two thousand six to adopt these rules if, if they can get them passed.
Josh, just a, just a clarification for, not only for ourselves, but for any of the public that's listening. What, just, just describe the difference between lined and unlined landfills, so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Uh, so aligned landfill, uh, typically we th- when with aligned landfill, we think of our, um, municipal solid waste landfill, MSW landfill, but that, what that has is, uh, either synthetic or clay liner system underneath the landfill. And that, uh, you're able to collect all the leachate, the rainwater that goes within that footprint of the landfill, and then you have to haul out that leachate or treat that leachate, um, and it just isn't, um, go right down into the groundwater, so.
Thank you.
And the reason, I guess the, you know, backing up a little further, the main reason why, um, construction and demolition landfills historically have been unlined is, you know, you think of a, a structure, these structures are out in the elements all the time. They contain wood, concrete, block, you know, inert materials that really don't have, um, as much of a threat as, you know, mixed garbage, plastics, that type of stuff. So that's why historically, um, these landfills have been unlined. Um, so they kinda have, you know, they've had three public hearings, uh, virtual hearings on these rules, kinda, kinda highlighting, um, everything from closure to transition to operation of new facilities, and I'll kinda just, uh, touched in these a little bit. Um, one of the first things that they'll be, that'll be coming out of these rules, and this doesn't really impact our county that much, but is, they're gonna be getting rid of permit by demolition, um, for demo- demolition debris. So if you're, meet certain conditions, some homeowners are allowed to bury their houses onsite, you know, on their own property. We don't really see it much in Hubbard County because of our water table, because of the, you can't do within shoreline districts, things like that, so it doesn't impact us that much, but, this could impact certain areas of the state quite a bit. And then, uh, kinda the next part of this is that they're kinda setting out a timeline for closure, so once these rules would be adopted, um, facilities would have either two years, five years, or eight years to meet the requirements of the new rules. Facilities that close within two years after the rule goes into effect would be able to use your existing closure practices at, at your facility. So like with this, I think of our north, north demolition landfill, you know, we, when this rule goes into place, we'd have two years to fully close that facility, um, and stop accepting, um, C and D waste in our landfill. And if we do that within that two-year timeframe, we can do that closure with what our current rule, current permit says, so, just our normal two feet of cover. We don't have to have any expanded cover, expanded, uh, regulations on that.
So Josh, would you then accept that and then truck it somewhere else? Cause if you just start refusing?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we'd have to figure out, and that's, you know, why we've been already kinda planning for this with our whole regional approach, but, you know, with the rules that they're outlining now, it's, you know, now we actually have, are getting dates on when we have to start making these plans, so.
So is this gonna be another unfunded mandate that counties are gonna have to find all the dollars?
Yep, yeah, at the current, current way it's going, yeah. Um, and then they have another timeline. If your facility closes within five years, between that two and five-year window, you have to have an enhanced soil cover, so typically you're looking at having like five feet of soil and has to meet compaction rates and rejection rates of the water. Um, and then if you go up to that five or that eight-year, um, timeframe, then you'd have to have a synthetic cover over the top of your landfill. And if you look at what we're doing in Park Rapids, um, you know, with our, you know, the groundwater concerns we've had historically in Park Rapids, if that's a facility, you know, we are doing a synthetic cover over the landfill there, so I think in Park Rapids, we'd probably fall into that if these rules went into place with that eight-year window, so we'd have probably eight years to close our facility in Park Rapids.
So if nobody builds a C and D landfill again, what?
You know, there are.
And it seems like they're not helping us accomplish that at all at this point.
You know, there are lined facilities, it's just they're a long ways away, so I mean, you're gonna have, if you, they can accept that ma- sec- accept that material, the transportation cost to get it there and, and pay for that disposal's gonna, you know, ref- be reflective closer to MSW rates, so.
And how long would those landfills fill up then? Wouldn't take long.
Yeah, if all the, you know, there's, I think, can't remember if it's upper seventies or upper nineties, you know. I think it might be like seventy-eight unlined landfill facilities within the state, and that number, like I said, might be closer to ninety, but I mean, that's a lot of facilities that you'd look at closing, so.
Sorry, I, I, they, my, my concern here is obviously, I understand why they're doing what they're doing, but are they thinking of the consequences of what they're doing and are they being more receptive to, you know, the concept that the counties around here are presenting?
I think they're, I mean, I think that from what we've seen, I mean, that's their goal, or that, that's their idea, is people would go towards the hub and spoke like we've been projecting, but again, that doesn't, there's no funding attached to that, so how do you, how do you go to that without, without assistance and funding assistance?
So have they, have they thought through this eight-year timeline? Because to get facilities up and running in eight years is kind of an impossibility without, without funding.
Yeah, and then, I mean, even the permitting, permitting timelines to get through.
Even up to date with permitting us at our current level.
Yep, it's gonna take a long time, so. I think in a lot of this, and I mean, I think that's a lot of the, a lot of the comments they'll probably see, um, with those timelines, uh, you know, just having a, a two-year timeframe or a kind of a blank timeframe out there, just doesn't make a lot of practical sense either. I think it'd be a lot more practical to tie these closures to maybe, um, to clo- time to how much room your facility might have left, or a phase of your facility. Some of the, you know, our landfills, you know, are, both are gonna be closing within that, you know, are up to capacity, so we won't have, you know, that much to worry about, but if you have a, a landfill where you're not gonna be able to get your grades to be able to shed water within the two years to close, I mean, it's kind of gonna be even a, a greater burden on, on counties to have to figure out how you can get to your final cover specs without having to, um, spend excess money on synthetic liners and things like that, so.
Kinda sounds like long-term care. You're making policy that makes it harder to succeed when you're already having trouble.
Yeah, and then just, you know, these next few slides just kinda covered again that two, five, and eight-year timeframe. And then, um, getting into kinda the operation aspect, when you got a, if you did put in a new lined landfill, some of them, um, guidelines in there were also concerning. One of the, one instance is fill areas, they won't, right now for a property line, you have to be setback fifty feet from a property line. With the new rules, that would increase to two hundred feet, which, I mean, with, when you're trying to develop a facility, you know, your land area, your airspace, all really is important to make sure you're maximizing your, your facilities, so. And they didn't really have a good scientific reason, um, why they would increase that from two hu- fifty feet for two hundred feet. A lot of the new requirements in this, in their proposed rules are just as, as stringent, if not more stringent than, um, your MSW, your municipal solid waste landfills, which is also kinda, uh, crazy to me, because again, you're dealing with more, you know, just construction demolition debris, more inert material. You're not dealing with your mixed garbage that you'd be throwing in there. One of the other things would be looking at having to have either active or passive gas monitoring while you're operating the facility. Again, that's a concern. I mean, again, you're working with construction demolition with debris, that doesn't really, shouldn't really be an issue, where that gas monitoring, you know, comes into play in an MSW landfill is because of the, you know, the the food waste, the organic waste, everything else you're, you're putting in there, so. That seemed like a little over the top as well. And then just looking at your cover systems, you have, with our current facility, we're supposed to put cover on our unlined demolition landfill every month. With this new rule, they'd wanna put cover on, at least six inches of cover on every week, or possibly daily, depending on what you're accepting in your facility. So again, you're having to put that cover on, it's a lot more operation expense and also, burns through your airspace of your facility if you're having cover that frequently. And again, they didn't really have much of a, you know, it kinda tried to, what's the science or reasoning behind that? And kinda they reflect back to, you know, vector control pests, but again, you don't have a MSW landfill where you're taking food waste and things like that, where you might get scavengers and, and birds and, and all that stuff, so it's kinda, there's kind of a disconnect there between what would make sense. And then they have guidelines, you know, they're pretty standard for closure, closure care, and, uh, one big requirement as well, and, and this I don't really have a clear picture on, but would be with financial assurance, um, and that pretty much if you put in a new landfill facility, you have to have money set aside or dedicated to pay for your total, um, filling your landfill closure costs and unexpected expenses that come out. And, uh, there's some differences between public and private facilities that I think we'd have to get clarification on before we kinda have a comment on, you know, rule, but there's a lot to it, um, and I think there'll be a lot of comments, a lot of pushback, but I just kinda wanted to give you guys an update and kinda let you know where things are at, so.
I know you know this, but I invite you to add in the comment section. If it gets too expensive to get rid of garbage, people are just gonna dump it wherever.
Yeah, and I think that'll be, should be a common theme in the comments they receive, so.
I think we've done a tremendous job of trying to divert some of that waste stream, you know, with the reuse center and everything like that. I think there's a lot of things that people are repurposing rather than taking it straight to, to the demo, you know, which is fantastic.
Yep.
Has the, uh, MPCA figured out what they're gonna do about all the solar panel disposals that are becoming up and? Cause there's a lot of them that have been installed the last few years and they're good for twenty-five years or so.
Yeah, it's kind of a, an ongoing topic or point of discussion where they're looking at possibly setting up a product stewardship type thing to be able to manage them, that material, so.
Harm of harmful chemicals in those things.
Well, yeah, it's definitely gonna be an issue that we'll be dealing with as well, so. So they're working on it, I don't think they've, they just haven't came up with any answers yet, so.
I, I'm curious, the background of the people that came up with this, um, draft rule?
Um, so really, it's, it's the MPCA, their, um, landfill units, so I mean, there's a lot of engineers and their engineers and their, uh, permitting staff. The guy leading it now was actually our regional, um, compliance inspector several years ago, so.
Like you said, there's, but he hadn't, they had no scientific data for going from fifty feet to two hundred foot setback.
Yeah, a lot of it's just pulling, again, a lot of the di- stuff they pulled was pulling it from MSW standards, which, which should be, this, the construction demolition, in my opinion, shouldn't be as stringent as those, so, yep.
Okay. Thanks for the bad news.
I, just curious, so if we, because of the hub and spoke thing isn't, appeared to be going anywhere at this point for funding, what would it cost for us to put in a lined, just in our county? Do you have any idea?
Um, I mean, yeah, we've went through all them numbers with, uh, with our study and with, uh, with our hub and spoke, um, planning, I don't have them right off the tip of my tongue, but I think, uh, I think you're looking at three, I think, I think you're looking at, you know, probably, to probably get through the, the facility design and operation, I mean, you're probably looking at two to five million dollars, I'm guessing.
How long do they last? Fifteen, twenty years?
That would probably just be your first phase of your landfill if you did that, so. What we were trying to do with our hub and spoke project is build that out through, you know, a twenty-year cycle. So that's where, you know, if we were just doing it ourselves, it wouldn't be as, quite as much investment as if we were doing a regional facility, but it's still, you know, the, the operating costs, the, um, the actual landfill construction costs, just make it cost, you know, with the volumes we get in, it's just cost prohibitive without, I think, without, uh, state assistance, so.
Do you have more numbers that you could bring next week when we're looking at your budget presentation? You have, you have, you have.
Yeah, I mean, it's just they're, they're gonna be out, you know, it's, they're a couple of years outdated already, too, so.
It's just frustrating, cause you, you think you would find a solution first before you start changing the rules.
Yeah, or you have these timelines.
Know where you're going, you know?
Or maybe you put these timelines out, instead of two and eight years, they're ten and twenty years, you know, so you can develop that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what other good news do you have?
Um, I think that's the biggest thing, yes, be working on for a while, but next item I have is to review and approve quote, um, for a trailer for our solid waste department. So this trailer, uh, we received two quotes with the low quote being from Stenberg's Trailers and Cattle Supply in Motley for eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. This would be for a twenty-seven foot goose neck trailer. Um, we use this trailer a lot to be going out, getting bales and, and transferring materials from our north to south transfer station. This is budgeted for twenty twenty-five and we'd be replacing our two thousand fourteen, um, Abu trailer, um, that we plan to auction off, so. And then this does include, uh, tax title and license as well, so.
This isn't a, isn't a dump trailer, it's just a flatbed trailer.
Just a flatbed trailer, yeah.
Does Ted make a motion to approve the low quote?
Ted moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
David seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carry.
And that's all I had, so, does anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Administrative process item before you today, um, January twenty-three, we approved, um, going out and having a third party administer our Cobra, uh, professional services, and that was with MedSurety, uh, for Cobra and state continuation, uh, benefits. Um, Human Resources has learned working with WEX and the Minnesota Healthcare Consortium, consortium, that WEX can also complete our, um, Cobra and Minnesota state continuation as well. So as a housekeeping processing, um, we have currently with WEX, um, the, the VIBA, our HSA, Health Savings Account, and FSA, Flex Spending Accounts as well with WEX, so we just wanna bring everything together under one website, one portal of administration to, to move, um, that to, to WEX. There, um, is a cost saving minimal, but you know, dollars are dollars, sixty dollars a month adds up, um, uh, in a year and, and over time, so there is that cost savings as well, too. We're asking for a November first transition timeline. Both companies is, is fine to disembark and, and go on. That will accommodate our open enrollment in the fall for our persons out on Cobra and continuation coverage as well, too. So a good transition timing with that. So just asking for approval to make this administrative processing, um, change of professional services.
Okay, is there a motion?
Does Ted will make a motion to approve?
I'll second. Ted moves, Tom seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Can we skip to, uh, ten C first?
Sure can.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody had a good Labor Day weekend. Um, so kind of a longer agenda this morning. Um, I'll give a brief update of the construction project, talk about upcoming tasks. Then also our board action item this morning to review the proposal request number eleven from the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry required changes. And there's a couple of other. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to pull up and talk about, just approved scope to date and then future added scope from the county. So we'll get going here, so a construction update, so construction has been ongoing as everybody's been able to see. At the government center level one, interior framing and drywall install was completed, um, the acute skill ceiling tile install- installation was completed. As well as the painting, casework installation was completed and the flooring was completed, so that space is, is uh. Getting ready to be turned over and getting ready for furniture installation here very soon. At the additions, garage and Sallyport fo- footings and foundations were completed, backfill was completed, the CMU wall. On the west side was completed and the precast erection commenced, and as you can see, has been substantially completed. The law enforcement center addition on the east side, footings and foundations were completed as well as the backfill, so very soon. We'll see, uh, start to see some structural steel being erected. I do have some photos of these spaces, so these, these first couple photos are showing the government center level one, just showing the finished ceiling. The painting. And as well as the flooring. The casework that was installed in that space. And then the next photos jumping over to the uh, west side additions for the garage and the Sallyport showing our new foundation walls. Showing the backfilling that was completed. The new CMU wall up against the existing building that was completed. And then some cool photos showing the, 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 the precast erection. For the new garage and the Sallyport. Uh, so these, these photos are at the LEC east side, just showing our foundations and the backfill being completed. For our new entrance. As well. So what's upcoming, so we'll be continuing our bi-weekly project oversight committee meetings. And we'll be continuing construction, looking to turn over phase one A at the government center level one, jumping over to phase one B. And then can, can then continue our construction at the additions as well. Overall schedule, so again, for, from a renovation aspect, level one renovations looking to be wrapped up here in September. That might trickle into October a little bit, re- and then the lobby records and sheriff's offices commencing here in January of next year. Completion of April two thousand twenty-six, renovation for the housing units and booking. That is already commenced and then wrapping up October two thousand twenty-six. And then new construction for the garage and Sallyport looking to be wrapped up June of two thousand twenty-six and the new, the, the new addition on the east side. Being wrapped up early next year. So proposal request number eleven, Mendali plan review changes as required. Wanna give a high level description of kinda what this change required, again. Um, on a lot of our projects, if not all, it's, it's, it's very common to have an anticipated change order from the state. We don't get these changes until the plan review has been completed, we've obtained a building permit, and then we get to see kinda what the changes were. Made from, 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 from the state as required. Um, again, this is all post bid, so this in result is uh, is an additional change order. So some of the big level ticket items, so this here, this floor plan is showing the new uh, garage in Sallyport. And it's a little bit of a small picture, but a ship's ladder had to be added for roof access into that space. That was a pretty uh, expensive change up on the garage roof. And then in addition, as we'll see here on the next few floor plans, a roof hatch had to be added, which then requires additional roof patching. And what have you. This next page is showing the booking space there on the, on, on the west side coming off the additions. We had to add a few new detention frames in the, in, in, into the crash cells. Um, which then again, in result, requires additional CMU sock coating, patching, electrical rough ends. Um, and then we also had to add a new wall there on the north side. We're removing that wall to get our detention frames into the cells, so we have to patch it back in. Um, and then the next, the next floor plan showing uh, on the left is cell C. So on the north side, Mendali is requesting us to add some type of egress, we had a couple of options that we could have proceeded with, but talking with the county and the oversight group. This is what we agreed upon, so on the north set, or on the north side there, you see a new vestibule, if you will, going out the north for egressing out of that cell C. So we had a couple of new door frames added, new walls, paintings, ceilings, flooring, et cetera, in that space. And then also on the southwest corner, you see a couple of new detention windows that were added as well, so again. Trickle effect for new, for, for additional CMU work and patching. And then also in these cells, at the detention officer's office space, we had to add metal railings in those cells.
So this uh. Added, is that a door that's being added?
Yep, so those are two new doors that are being added, so we're essentially creating a vestibule, I think right there currently is, is an existing office. Um, or a collaboration area, and so we're demoing that space, we're adding two new door frames and then making that space a, a vestibule essentially. Or egress only.
I'm assuming these are cells?
Yes.
So then there's gonna be a doorway from the cells, area of the cells to the outdoors.
Yeah, so there is, so this was all in the original bidding documents, so on the south side, you see doors going from the booking into the jail cells. And the north egress, if you will, is only for egress only, and that was required to add per, per the state. So everything else that, that you see in white is part of the original bidding documents to be included in this project. It's just the area that's bubbled in red there, that's being added from, from the state of Minnesota.
And why would they put a door there? I know, that's a.
Yeah, they, they have, they have egress code stipulations that, and again, there, there were a couple of different options. And the main reason why we did that is there's a uh, it's hard to see on this, this page, but there's a pretty sizable office space there on the northeast side. We could have added egress going out towards the east and then out towards the north, but we wanna maintain that square footage in that office space. For that room, I, I, I believe it's an additional. It's hard to see. Yeah, it's a collaboration room, so then we would have had to made that, that big room into a corridor, so we'd have to add a, a wall going out to the east. Which would have take, taken up square footage from that space, so the decision, again from oversight, was to just add a, a small vestibule to, to, to. To the north of that jail cell to egress out of.
And then on, on that same drawing, there's a, a little red circle in the bottom left. That was for windows?
Yes, det- detention windows.
Okay, are there detention windows in the rest of those?
Nope, it's just those two jail cells.
Why is that, I wonder?
That's a good question.
Why would it be required in two, but not in any of the others? Not that I want them included, but.
No, it's a fantastic question, and that's something I could follow up with you guys on.
This is kinda curious, why would they be required in two cells there, but nothing in any of the others? I mean, they are just solely detention cells, it's not like they're gonna be in there forever.
Yeah, correct.
It's just a short time that they should be in there.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Nope, that's something I could definitely follow up with you guys on. Then the last floor plan again is just showing, it, it, it's a roof plan showing the additions, on the east side, we see the garage, the Sallyport and then the. And then on the east side, we see the new LEC addition. And here we're showing the new roof hatch for the ship's ladder, and also we added some uh, some mechanical staircases to get over the roof. Parapet for maintenance reasonings and access points up on the roof. So in addition, or, or in addition, this is a brief summary of the change events from, from the respective prime contractors. If you go to the second page, their bubbled in red is the total amount of what this impact is. So eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and, and forty-seven, or ninety-seven cents is the cost impact for this change order. And another thing that, kind of a silver lining with this change event, so on the east side, we had a wall assembly going up from the top of the footing. That was originally identified as a firewall, and after Mendali review, that wall was not needed, so that was erased. So in, in addition, a lot of the fire stopping was taken out, which did result in a pretty sizable deal from our general contractor. Um, which helped kinda mitigate this cost impact, but again, with all the high level um, changes required, required from the state. This is the cost impact with this change order.
So basically, all of these changes are state driven?
Yes. Yep, and again, I mean, this is something, you know, we try to, or the design team tries to really capture a lot of these things. The codes, there's multiple codes that are evolving every year, and there's different changes that happen, but we don't know what those are truly. Until we get through that state plan review and understand what the impact is to the floor plan and what they're gonna require to have in the project and said project. Until post bid, we get our building permit, get through plan review, and then this, again, is very highly anticipated on, on a lot of our projects as. A sizable change order. So a couple other sheets I just wanted to share today, so change orders to date. Um, you can see on the left side, there is the title of the changes to date and the status as approved, so these all been changed and committed. They've been executed change orders, um, and the total, if you look on the bottom on the left side, it's showing the total change orders to date that were accepted. And then on the right, you can see out of that hundred and sixty-nine thousand, a hundred and eleven thousand of that has been essentially county requested items. Um, for, for a variety of reasons, they could have been design misses, um, added scope that. The county wants spaces are completed, are, are, are seen as essential to get done. Um, but I wanna share this just to show what that impact is of that hundred and sixty-nine thousand, that a hundred and eleven thousand of that has been county requested items. Then the next slide, again, future added scopes, so these are items that have not been uh, created into commitments, they have not been decided on. But are being anticipated, so future change orders, again, from the county as seen essential, added locks to the second level casework. And that's totaling to seventeen hundred dollars or one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and eleven cents. And then some at, uh, additional carpets, the second, the first level, um, which is totaling to twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And then also on the first level at the LEC offices, again, looking at other spaces that, that would, would, would like to be. Um, included in the original scope is eighty-eight thousand, a hundred and twenty-one dollars and eleven cents. So again, these are change orders that have not been decided on, commitments have not been made to the primes. But again, our changes that the county is looking at doing from an essential standpoint, things that need to be done. So total future change orders totaling to a hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And then future change orders that are required, I do have the Mendali plan review changes total included. Which if you add the two for future change orders from the county, future change orders that are required, we're totaling to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. And forty-four cents, and then if we go to the next slide, this is our overall budget summary where we can see these dollars impacted. So again, this is a tool that we use to track our funding sources, our soft costs and our construction costs and our contingency. Wanna scroll down to the construction costs, line five, well, we have highlighted that a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars are those county requested. Future change orders that were shown in the overall budget summary. And then that eighty-four thousand dollars is the Mendali plan review changes, which has what we're showing here impacting our contingencies. So with the Mendali plan review changes, our contingency is sitting at two hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And again, that includes the Mendali changes, but not the LEC finishes. But again, just wanted to show this in the overall budget summary, um, if we do include that LEC improvements and accept those change orders. Then our contingency would, would, would be around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and with the cost to date of eight point one million left to spend on this project. From a construction manager standpoint, there, there's, there's some concern there with available of, uh, of, available funds to, 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 to do these changes. But again, just wanted to show you guys to date, change orders that have been accepted. Uh, future change orders to date and how that impacts the overall budget on the project.
Are you saying these added uh, change orders will put us over budget?
What's that?
Would you say these added change orders will put us over budget?
It won't put us over budget, but again, and, and we have contingency for things like these, things that are missed or things that are unforeseen's. Mendali plan review changes, but I just wanted to show that if we do accept, you know, the LEC additional finishes improvements. Our contingency is gonna be at a hundred and eight thousand dollars left, and with the size of the project, the cost to date remaining. And with, you know, not really getting into the existing jail, you know, cause typically we like to hold, you know, five percent ratio from kids. From our contingency to our cost to date or remaining balance for the project, and this would put us down to probably a, a little bit under three percent, if not at three percent. So I wanna put us over budget, we would still have a hundred and eight thousand dollars left in our contingency. But again, from a project standpoint, we'd like to maintain that five percent as the project.
That doesn't go very far.
Alright, cause we, we, we just don't know what we're gonna run into, especially when we start to get into the existing spaces at the jail.
Jeff, who made the request from the county?
So I, I, I'll walk through that a little bit, um, we have a threshold, and right now we're asking for the, this approved scope of work changes. For the eighty-four, five ninety-four. With the agreement, I've got the authority to approve change orders and scope of work up to, is it twenty-five or fifty?
Twenty-five grand.
Twenty-five thousand, so anything over that is coming, is coming to you guys, which is why we're here. Um, but the, I'm, I'm gonna go look. It was one of the last pages, wasn't it?
Keep going, or yeah?
I think it's this one. So we had, um. Kinetics flooring was an upgrade to the flooring that was requested from uh, law enforcement, and this is in the hallways in the detention areas. And it's just a, it's an upgrade to a finish that was, that was requested, um. The auditor's office revisions was. Some changes in how that was designed, the major pieces are, um. Which one was it? Oh, right here, um, this added carpet scope. We did not address the common areas on the first and second floor that were outside the scope of the project. So, and they wouldn't match, so this means that we're gonna go back and we're gonna carpet the break room and the, um. The conference room on the second floor, and it means we're gonna do everything on the first floor except what's actually in the service area for the auditor's office. We're gonna leave that in there, cause you can't, there's a break there, but we're going all the way back to, um, to court administration for that. The second one, that's the biggest, that's the biggest one here that hasn't been brought forward yet, this eighty-eight thousand dollars is, um. The rest of the offices in the law enforcement center that were outside the original scope. And the stuff that was outside of the original scope is any office in their admin space that wasn't touching the wall where the new construction was happening. So if you walk back past, um, the sheriff's office and you get into the break room and you get into uh, the s- the. The captain's rooms and the interview rooms and all of that, or not interview rooms, but the other offices for investigators, there's about eight or ten. And the restrooms and lockers on that floor, that were not included in the original scope, and it doesn't make sense not to do it.
So does that include new cabinetry, carpet, paint?
Carpet, paint, finishes, um, and then we'll have another item relative to the, um, to the furniture. My proposal would be that we would, to do this, we would probably backfill about this two hundred thousand dollars from cap- current capital. In twenty-five or twenty-six, to make sure that we keep that five percent contingency fund. Or that we make that commitment and we don't spend it until we actually need to. If we determine, you know, we might make it on three percent, we might need, we might need five percent, but at some point, we would have to earmark. Um, some current capital funds, um, to make sure that the project doesn't.
So what's changed, cause when we first went over there, they were content with their, that existing space?
Yes.
So what's changed?
Again, it, downstairs where we have the carpet, that's ma- that makes sense, that's kind of a. I'll say an architectural oversight to say that we're gonna be doing this room, but we're not gonna do that room, and then we're gonna have a problem with our finishes. Just aren't gonna line up and they aren't gonna match up. That's about fifty percent of the issue over in the law enforcement office. And the other fifty percent of the issue is, and I wish, I, I wish we would have identified this beforehand, because I would have just asked you instead of two point one million dollars for the. For the bond for this, we would have had the scope there when we said two point two and it'd be covered, we wouldn't be coming back now and say we need current capital to cover those additional costs. I have also, uh. I have also, uh, at the same point in time, the attorney's office says, we're perfectly fine with the furniture that we have in, in, for the individual attorneys, but we're just doing the admin portion. Now they're telling me they want, they want to upgrade the furniture and, and that space as well.
Start remodeling your house and then...
It, it's where do you stop? And, and there's...
Stop when you don't have any more money.
Yeah.
So, uh, can we wait on PR twelve for a while to see where we're at? Three months from now to see if our contingency fund is in good shape yet, before we decide?
No, and the only reason we can't is because when we get into that space to have the contractor do it and not have to come in, we'd have to, we'd have to, um, do it all at the same time. So we would need, we're not, this is an estimate at this point in time, um.
So what are we delaying in our capital improvement plan if we're earmarking money from there?
We're really, we're really not. We had, we did not have all of our twenty-five and all of our twenty-six dollars spent.
But we had talked about where we wanted to spend it.
Well, yeah, there's, there's been a lot of demands for it in different areas.
So what are we not going to do, not even with this project, but what are we willing to give up then?
If, so you're wanting to go bring it from three percent back up to five percent, is that right?
What we're needing to do today is to approve PR, um, the Mendeli Plan Review Changes. But we're given the heads up that this PR twelve is coming. And that, in order to not cut the contingency account to the point, or, or to not be over budget at that point in time, we're recognizing that we had some, some additions to the project during, during construction.
But if you find you don't need that money, it comes back to our capital.
I, I would, I would, I would just earmark the capital funds for this, and if at the end of the project we ha, need it, we'll take it, and if at the end of the project we don't need it, we won't use it. I, I'm just, what I'm, what I'm wanting to make sure is that we don't overrun on cost. That we earmark an extra two hundred thousand dollars from capital to cover that, but we won't spend that until we get to the end of the project.
And if we use that other budget thing of using the three hundred grand worth of capital we talked about, that'll, that'll take all the capital for, current capital for next year then?
We haven't spent all the twenty-five, so it'll be about a hundred, a hundred thousand from twenty-five and a hundred from twenty-six.
What, what was that thing we were talking about, using current capital for, to lower the levy by three, was that the sheriff's stuff too?
That's an idea. I, I haven't, we'll talk about that next week.
For the female prisoners?
Yeah, well, no, I've already included, I've already included that one in there, so we do, but what we, what that might look like is if the back, um, the biggest piece, the easiest piece to move is this back elevator can get pushed from twenty-six to twenty-seven, that's sixty-five thousand dollars, that would be, if we're not clear of the two hundred thousand dollars, that would be the piece I would move and then we would be.
It was the prisoner housing?
Yes.
That's what I meant, the female prisoner.
Yep.
It's three hundred and sixty-three thousand or something.
Yep, and I've...
But, and, but we only get five hundred a year for current capital needs, right? Unless, we didn't spend it all the previous year too, so probably put more.
We're, we're, we got a million, one point one million. If the, it depends annually if we're putting five or six into economic development, but we got a million or a million one, so we, we do have the funds there. And it, now while we're doing the project is the cheapest time.
I just get frustrated when they...
Yep.
Oh, no, we're good here, we're, we, this will be fine, and then now it's not fine, that's, that's kind of...
My biggest pet peeve too, is, is that we go back and we ask for something after we had the opportunity and we didn't. I mean, if, if the additional scope would have said, we're going to do all of these offices, and we're going to do the rest of this carpet, and the project was two hundred thousand dollars more at the front end, and we bonded for that, mm, you know, the debt service would be... Yep, it is, it does have to come out of a different bucket.
I think my, uh, biggest thing would be, uh, well, okay, we need to take more out of capital funds, but, uh, you know, we're working on our twenty-twenty-six budget, and we're not going to be increasing anything more for capital funds.
Well, you definitely don't want to use capital funds for non-capital things, because then it's gone forever. Every year, you're paying for that.
What I'm saying is, is that we do not have a project list in twenty-six, we, we do not have a project list in twenty-five that's going to spend the million dollars, and we do not have a proposed project list in twenty-six, even with offsetting the boarding of prisoners that is going to exhaust that, those dollars. So we're building fund balance in that capital. And if we're going to do this, it makes sense to do this out of that, those funds.
Because these are truly capital items, they're not ongoing operations.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just unplanned capital.
Unplanned, but at the same time, I don't want to increase to throwing twenty-six, um, levy to increase more for capital funds.
We are, we are not increasing the levy, we are taking it from the one point one that's already allocated to that. We, we are not increasing the levy to do this. I'll, I, I will have the detail for you next week. We can do this within the existing budget without affecting what the levy request is for twenty-six or twenty-seven.
So what we're looking for now is to, um, approve or vote on the PR number eleven, for sure.
Yep.
Because of the mandated improve, or mandated adjustments that need to be made according to the state's requirements.
Correct.
And, and understand that I'll be bringing additional scope with PR twelve and with the additional furniture requests that are, that are coming on.
Yeah, in the future.
That we would cover with earmark money out of capital. So I would, I would say that the recommendation is, is, there's a period after the eight thousand, eighty-four thousand, and the second piece is to recognize that we're going to be coming to you again with these other numbers. But I'm guessing that earmarking two hundred thousand dollars from capital will get us, will get us the float we need to get these things done. I also tell the sheriff's office they're going to have to buy some of their own furniture for that new space, they've got some restricted funds that can be used, for some of that.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'm going to approve the state required changes.
Okay, Dave moves to approve the state required changes.
Choice on that. So this, this is, this is the motion then, as we're, as asked for by ICS.
Would you be interested in adding in the carpet for second, the carpet in the hallways?
Right here?
Yeah, the twenty-three thousand.
To finish that?
Yeah.
Truthfully, I've already approved that, because it's under twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So this is, this is this, the additional, the second additional scope will be, will be coming later, but...
Okay, so I'm going to second that, um, and then, uh, so I believe Jeff was telling us the eighty-eight thousand we needed to approve shortly if we're going forward that way, so if we don't approve that, now what does that mean?
We'll be coming back, back with the request for tho, those, those changes for, for twelve, right? Coming back the next time for that. But I will show you next week how we can set aside money from the capital to ma, to make,
For that.
To earmark to make the, make the contingency account whole without affecting next year's budget. So, um, I think it's probably best to just do this piece right now, and then I'm going to try to get all, as, as much information as we have about all the other things that people are looking for, which I think we've talked about it the whole list, right? I mean, it's the, it's PR twelve, it's the additional furniture, furniture request that I'm aware of. Anything else that comes up is going to come up as a result of general construction costs, um, or change orders in the field to get through a construction issue, um, I, I won't, I won't have any more requests for new furniture, new, new finishes once we get this full list for you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I, I, I just, I have a comment, I think all of us, including myself, we've been looking through the proposed budget, and there's not a lot of areas to cut, because a lo, there wasn't a lot of additional requests, so it'll be interesting to see how you're going to come up with all this money.
No, no room to add either.
No.
I should note that we had a twenty-two thousand dollar deduct for not doing the glazing on the second floor.
Yeah, I did, I did notice that, yeah.
And what do we get? Just an email today that says we're going to get fifteen thousand back from the state on, uh, on permitting? There's money coming and going with this project, and that's very typical.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Definitely look for other sources, Jeff, of funding they have.
Mm-hmm.
That could even be using for this finishing stuff, because
Yep.
I really am not too tickled of spending even more capital on it.
I don't, I don't like coming with this piece and then coming back and saying, but we need this and this and this, when we should have had that conversation upfront. I had a ver... Thanks, guys. I had a really long conversation last week about...
Specifically said, it's, it's fine. Don't need to do anything with this, that's, that's the part I'm getting hung up on.
Yep.
So...
All right.
So then the next two are, are administrative things that we wouldn't typically be doing until the third week in September. The only reason that I'm advancing these this year is because of the addition of the Walker Area Ambulance Service District, we have to coordinate with Cass County, and Cass County wants, um, is doing theirs this week. So Cass County is setting their date for their TNT hearing on December second at six o'clock for their general countywide, and they wanted to coordinate and have the, uh, the TNT for the ambulance service district at seven o'clock that same night, so that their commissioners only had to have one meeting since they're the home, home county for this. And then it seemed to make sense that we would, um, just schedule our date at the same time. So...
Two separate motions or just one?
I, I, just to note, I, I have a personal commitment, I will not be here on December fourth, but that should be okay.
And December fourth is negotiable, if you, if there's a calendar date that works better for that, then we can choose that, and remember, the next week is AMC.
I know, I'm not sure I'll be going to that either, so...
Okay, um, it's, it's easier to get it done early. We already have everything in the works to get our tax statements out on time, they're supposed, set to be mailed, I think, uh, on November twelfth this year. So they should definitely be out by the, before the deadline of the twenty-fourth. So my proposal is, intent A is for us to do this Thursday, the fourth, at six. The meeting can't end before six o'clock, so we typically, by practice, start it at six o'clock.
Well, the other four of you will be here, right? Yeah.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, yeah.
Yeah.
And I've already checked with Marie, um, Marie has a role in that meeting, she's available that day as well.
I'm going to approve the public hearing, Dave, for the truth in taxation for December fourth at six P M.
Is that for both, David? No, this is, we have to do these different, because they're different authorities.
Okay, Arielle. Okay, David moves to have the TNT on December fourth at six P M, is there a second, or, is there a second?
Everyone's having computer problems, so we're distracted.
Just want to make sure here, December fourth, yeah, I can second that.
We'll second that, okay, all right. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
And then ten B is really kind of administrative, Cass is proposing this date, um, so we would need a motion in a second to approve that date.
And then it would be the two commissioners that are in this taxing district that would go to that.
Correct, but, and at that point, Josh has already confirmed, I've got my full board there on the second, we will have a quorum for that meeting.
Okay.
But then yes, we would like both of ours who are on that board to be there as well.
And that was December second?
December second at seven o'clock.
Does that work for you, Tom, for the, the Walker ambulance on December, December second, seven?
Hold on, I, I believe it, oh yeah, December second, yeah, right, yeah, yeah, it does, both of those work, I already got it on here.
Already got it in there, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to approve that, if that's okay with you two.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, ten seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
The only other comments I have is that next week, we're going to, on the, uh, work session, we're going to see solid waste, and we're going to see human services, and you're going to see what that levy summary looks like, uh, where we're at, what changes we've made to that point, what changes we can make to, to come down. Um, I think when I last ran it, I was ducking under ten when we were looking at sixteen, and I think we can still get us down to that seven-ish percent without, um, without any major cuts. There's some administrative maneuvering to get us to seven. But I will have that, uh, and then we will not have a personnel committee meeting, although I do want to have a conversation, uh, about setting some, some blocks of time for, for union negotiations, we're getting requests for that, so we just take a few minutes and look at calendars after the meeting. We're getting requests for that, and I want to coordinate with Ann, and, uh, I'd like to pick a couple of days that are relatively open and give them those times, that's where we're going, when we're going to have our first meeting.
And we'll have public safety and transportation Friday?
We, I will not be there, so I will have to send out a note and see if they want to have the meeting without me, or if we want to reschedule. And truthfully, if we reschedule, um, AMC fall policy is next week, so it would be, we should reschedule. Because the first Friday in October, I'm planning on being fishing, so we should reschedule and have a meeting this month, this month. I will, I won't send that out this afternoon.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, committee reports.
I didn't have anything, I was gone.
Okay, I can start, um, Heartland Development Commission, we represented a plat for the Heartland Heights, and Mary's going to go before the planning commission and the city to have that approved, it'll be seventy-five single-family units. And then the fall bingo, um, is, um, in the works, it will be, let me double check, October...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-fifth, and so, um, we're in the process of getting sponsors, and, um, tickets are available to sale. See Mary if you want to sell any tickets. Heritage Living Center, um, uh, there was a survey, um, last Tuesday when we were there, and, um, there was only one finding, so that was great. Two hires, four terminations, there's three full-time FTEs, and, um, let's see, number of employees are a hundred and fourteen. Heritage Manor has a capacity of twenty-six, they're at twenty-four, the cottage is eighteen, they're at fourteen. Heritage Living Center, um, is, the capacity is fifty-four, and they're at forty-two. And, um, Stefan, because I'm board chair, we received letters from the state of Minnesota that we laid off, that we took off those, we could have been up to sixty-four beds, and we just took off the ten, otherwise we had to pay a tax on them. Trying to keep this short, let's see, oh, there was a, um, um, the roof redo is going to start in August. The air conditioning for the kitchen will take place after the roof is completed, um, they had the wifi go completely down, um, because it was so old, it was over ten years old, Vivy brought in hotspots for two weeks, so everybody had internet access. I think that's about it. For some reason, I don't have my financial paper up, let's see, oh, here we go. Total, oh, no, that's for the proposed budget, and we have not, um, approved that. Sorry, I don't have the financials, there's not much change from last month, so, anyway, that's mine.
Okay, all right.
I had parking wreck, um, there was nothing significant... I had parking wreck. Um, there was nothing significant besides the update on Deep Lake Park. They did discuss, uh, uh, the, uh, Farden, uh, park, or Ferris Park up in Farden Township. They have the, uh, disc golf nets and everything. They're gonna get those set and put up sometime here shortly. Um, they updated a little bit about the basketball nets on Heartland Park. Um, they were waiting on a couple of things there. Deep Lake Park, of course, was talked about and we accomplished that today. Um, the other thing was, uh, just a main item was, uh, for some reason, the sprinkler system up at Lake George Park does not work. The theory is it got hit by lightning, but it, this sounds like that's not the first time they've had a lightning issue there. So I'm not sure what's going on. Um, so, yeah. And other than that, I had extension. There wasn't nothing of significance there other than the fair was a success. And, uh, that was really the biggest thing that was, that was gone over. So that's it.
Has the, um, pickleball club had a fundraiser yet? There, was that there?
Wow, that was last week.
Yeah, that was last week, so there weren't any.
And actually, the fundraisers, the pickleball fundraiser was going for the community center, not pickleball courts.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah, okay.
I was wondering if they had it already.
I think it was the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I believe it was.
We were in Walker yesterday. Their new pickleball courts are lovely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
I was gone and you had my parks and you had the SWCD, so.
Okay.
Alrighty, so let's see. First, I'll go with the Mississippi Headwaters Board. Um, we didn't have a July meeting because of no, um, uh, variance requests or anything like that. Uh, August was a short meeting. There again, we had no, uh, uh, planning or zoning actions to take. Um, we went over our July and August press release. Um, the executive director, Tim, talked about the, uh, he goes to some of these events on the, uh, Mississippi River. Um, did the, uh, um, July fifteenth was a historical paddle. Um, and then there was the, uh, there was an article in the, um, Brainerd Dispatch about the signage, uh, that we're doing on the Mississippi River. Uh, let's see, we did have a discussion in Beltrami County. They wanted to bring this, uh, as a, uh, action before the board, but, uh, we were literally told about it two days ahead of time. Uh, there was a, a minor change, uh, a landowner, uh, property owner on Lake Bemidji was, uh, selling, going to sell his two properties that were next door to each other. Uh, in the process realized that the garage was partly on the other lot. So he had a lot like, lot line changed. There's a tongue twister. And, uh, a minor action, but, uh, we can't just have it not presented to us and okay an action that hasn't already been actioned, approved by the township board. So we told the, uh, uh, the resident that, uh, it didn't look like there would be any issues with it, but we couldn't approve it, uh, last month. And let's see, um, going with a new auditor. Let's see, and talked a little bit about our, uh, biennial conference that's gonna be coming up here at the end of October. That was that one. Then I had a Northwestern Minnesota Juvenile Center. Uh, that was the executive board meeting. So we just went over, um, our capital improvement plans. We got some quotes on some of the stuff we did. Uh, went over about the storm cleanup and some of the repairs. Driving back there now, it's about a quarter of a mile driveway back to the facility. It's wide open now. It used to be all pine forest and it's, it's just, it's crazy and like I say, it's wide open. Uh, we did have to get some quotes, uh, for stump removal in the, in the yard in the facility there where the, the kids and, and stuff might actually use. So we had to get a quote to get those stumps pulled. And, um, and we, we approved it at the executive board, but now it has to come before the full board this month. Uh, and then we also, once again, talked, went through the policy updates for the family leave and earned safe and sick time. And that was it for, for that. And let's see, Soil and Water Conservation District, I filled in for Tom. Let's see, my notes here. I know one of the things that I was excited about with that is that they have a new twenty-twenty-five plot book for Hubbard County. You'll have to go to the Soil and Water Conservation District to get a copy if you want. I thought maybe I could get one here today, but I guess not. Part of it, uh, they added old maps for townships, so you can see what it was. And that's where I was hoping to have one today, so I could explain or show you everything. But, uh, I guess they did some of the, uh, some maps from years ago and then of course the current ones. And there was also some write-up on a little bit of the history on all the different townships. So I was, uh, like I say, I was hoping to get one here at the courthouse this morning. That's one reason why I got here early. I was gonna read through it a little bit and now, eh, oh, well. And let's see, they talked about, uh, tree orders. Uh, the deadline for that is September fifteenth and they'll be picking them up. Uh, that's for the fall orders here in, uh, October fifteenth. Uh, let's see. And I guess that's really the highlights that I've got here.
So are they going to bring books over that we can buy here or do we have to go to the SWCD to get them?
Have to go to SWCD. There are books here, but they're not selling them. Cause of, cause of collecting taxes and the money goes all to them.
Okay. Well, thanks for sharing about that. Sounds interesting.
Yes, I'm gonna have to try to figure out, see if Tom could tell me how to get there.
Well, there's a D-Tour sign up.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
It's not from the, from the north. And let's see, so that, that was soil water conservation. Then I had, uh, being the vice chair of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission, also puts me on the Headwaters Regional Finance Corporation Board. And we had a meeting, uh, we have a biennial meetings. Uh, we had it last Friday. Um, we went over the portfolios, uh, cash available to lend, which was, uh, over two and a half million dollars. Uh, let's see, some of the stuff I can't go through because it's protected information about the people with getting the loans and requesting loans, stuff like that. So I guess there really wasn't a whole, whole lot to talk about here in public about that. And I guess that's all I've got.
Okay.
I, I have one thing to add. I forgot about the Mahavi meeting. Um, the tiny home development by New York Mills for the veterans. Um, they decided not to go with the contractor, cause it was so expensive and they're gonna try to be the general contractor themselves and get bids and see if anything will come in cheaper. So that's on hold.
Okay. Um, did anyone else go to the living at home open house?
I did.
What did you, what did you think?
It was beautiful and I asked Jeff to have her come to a work session so she can update us.
She'll be here in October. Or no, we're actually gonna schedule, uh, an update and then a tour in October.
Okay.
Okay.
Twenty-first.
Um, one of the, I'm not sure, I don't remember who it was, said that other counties are actually looking, coming in looking to see because it's such a well-designed space.
It was extremely well attended. That was, you had to park on the street or in the parking lot across the street to be able to access. It was, it was fantastic when the turnout was. Okay, if there's nothing else, then.
Annual meeting attendance?
Yep.
I'll let you know for sure. I know we're here too.
December eighth, tenth. So you have, you're gonna book rooms starting that Sunday? Is that the eighth?
Um, if registration is supposed to open today.
Okay.
Oh, I'll let you know by the night then.
And the rooms do go fast, but-
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. So is the eighth the, the Sunday? Cause that's usually when I go-
M R C starts, that's the, I think that's-
Yeah, M R C is usually on Sunday.
Yes, it is. M R C is the seventh.
Mark, my, my password doesn't work.
Okay, so I'll need something from the seventh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll need something on the seventh.
Seventh to the tenth.
Yes.
I'm saying no. I'm positive I won't be there.
Okay. Ted, you're just the normal registration?
Oh, yeah, I'm staying at the-
So you'll be there for, um, yeah. Are you gonna be at, at M R C next Wednesday?
That's usually I get there on, on Sundays, so now.
You will be there on Sunday? Okay, are you staying over?
Yes.
Okay. I probably, I probably won't drive down till Thursday then.
Okay.
Then, then we check out Wednesday morning.
Okay. I was looking, I apologize for the confusion. I was looking at, at the list here and seeing September tenth through the twelfth and my brain said December tenth through the twelfth. I think, uh, that's just a doofy. I apologize.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
I'm going to Alex if that's what you're asking.
Oh, the annual meeting?
December.
The annual, probably not. Registration's opening.
This week, so.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. If that's it, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'll move. Ten seconds. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Alright, motion carried.